I would like to welcome everyone to the Clarkston Independence District Library Board of Trustees Meeting for April 13th, 2020 at 6:38 PM is the call to order. Please call the roll.
Jan Gaffney?
I'm here.
Dan Green is absent. Allison McFadden-Keesling?
Here.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy?
Yes.
Ann Rose?
Yep.
Chris Shaw?
Yes.
Julie Meredith, here.
Excellent. I will now accept a motion to, for remote participation of board members.
So moved.
I felt moved.
Seconded.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the remote participation of Janice Gaffney, Allison McFadden-Keesling, Nancy Moon, Marilyn Pomeroy, Ann Rose, and Kristi Schall. Roll call, please.
Jan Gaffney?
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Keesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy?
Yes.
Ann Rose?
Yes.
Chris Shaw?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion is approved. I'll accept a motion for approval of the agenda.
I move that we approve the agenda as presented.
Jan Gaffney?
I second. I'm sorry, who was that? Ann or Chris? Nancy. Nancy, sorry. Never mind.
Please call the roll.
Okay, Jan Gaffney?
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Keesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy?
Yes.
Ann Rose?
Yes.
Chris Shaw?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion is passed. Now, we will have the call to the public at 6:40.
Anybody have any questions? Looks like Emily. Tim, can you unmute Emily?
Yep, sorry.
You hear me?
Yeah, I got you.
All right, cool.
Hi, Emily.
I've noticed that through social media, Novi Library has obviously closed through April 30, but they are canceling programs throughout May. I don't know what is the board deciding on the programs there?
This will depend on discussion tonight, I believe, Emily.
Okay.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Are there any other questions? If not, we will end the call to the public at 6:41, and I will accept a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
I make a motion that we accept the consent agenda.
I second.
Jan Gaffney?
So it's been moved and seconded that we approve the consent agenda. Is there anyone who wishes to discuss any particular item on the agenda?
I just have one quick question, and it's not really, the check runs, because I haven't been contacted about signing checks. I'm assuming that since there were two check runs, that...
Dan and Marilyn did the check runs.
Okay. They're so good to me.
We left you at home.
We thought you were busy. Well, yes, I am, kind of, but thank you. I just, I thought, oh, there were check runs, and I didn't even know about it. Okay, thanks.
Yep, we knew that you were trying to stay close to home, and Dan was willing to come in, so we just didn't even worry your mind about that one.
Thank you.
I hope that was okay.
It was fine, thank you.
Good. Are there any other questions about any consent item? If not, all those in favor, please...
I have a roll call.
I know, all those in favor, please respond to the roll call.
Nice.
Jan Gaffney?
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Keesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy?
Yes.
Ann Rose?
Yes.
Chris Shaw?
Yes.
Motion is passed, thank you. Library statistics.
Okay, the statistics are actually in your packet. Usually, they're separate, but they are in your packet. They're a little, they're a little sorry-looking, because we closed on the 15th. Interestingly, though, within those first 15 days, we did have 5,767 visitors. We also did almost 19,000 circulations. We had total computer users of 394. We did 516 information questions. We did 5,691 downloads. We had 2,401 wireless users, 86 study room uses, 13 children's programs with 419 participants, seven adult programs with 144 participants, all in the first two weeks of the month. So that was pretty good. Interestingly, if you look at the change from 2019, of course, everything is down about 50%, which makes sense, because we were only there for half the month, except for downloads, which were up 8%.
Well, good, that means people are making, taking advantage of the...
Yes.
Their productivity.
Yep, so in terms of statistics...
Significant, yeah.
And then, in terms of volunteer hours, we did have 30.75 volunteer hours in the first 15 days of the month. I know that Adrian was a little disappointed, because she just had half a dozen new volunteers that started, and she had to kind of put them on hold. But she's, but they seemed very enthusiastic and wanted to be contacted as soon as we reopen. So we're hopeful that we can get them back without too much trouble.
Excellent.
There we have statistics.
Now, the library director's report.
Okay, so for the director's reports, also in your packets. So basically, I did a general update, and just kind of an update of the things that I've been working on since, since the closure. So first of all, I've been, obviously, I've been managing the administrative maintenance of the library, transitioning as much work as possible to remote environments, troubleshooting issues caused by the building being closed with minimal staffing, like setting up delivery notifications, dealing with mail-in bills, and monitoring building for potential issues. Another big thing is monitoring the executive orders and assuring we are in compliance with all the guidelines, so ensuring staff can work at home, issuing exemption letters, coordinating remote meetings, and Open Meetings Act posting requirements, and following closure dates and building usage restrictions. We did execute the 2019 audit completely remotely. I'm gonna say it was more work that way, and thank you to Erica and Debbie for making that easier. Remote was, it was plunky, but we got it done. We've been, I've been meeting remotely each week with the department heads. I've been meeting remotely each week with the PR staff. I've been, I conducted a remote all-staff meeting. I've been attending the weekly remote meeting of the Michigan Library Directors held by the State Librarian, and also checking in on CIDL Virtual Programming and Services and providing staff with positive feedback. I've been attending a lot of remote meetings, webinars, reviewing best practices and documents from the CDC, the Library of Michigan, IMLS, a bunch of different locations to prepare for eventual reopening of the library. And I'm starting to develop a strategy and a service plan for the reopening of the library when the time does come. We are not ready to review that plan yet, but that's, I've been doing a lot of information gathering. I'm also coordinating a remote meeting of the Friends Board to discuss the book sale, because there's a lot of concern about the book sale and all those books that we have that won't get sold at the end of April. And developing and assigning additional work from home, the projects that staff can work on whose jobs cannot be done remotely. And then, lastly, I've been prepping upcoming 2021 budget meetings. So lots and lots going on, mostly from the guest room in my house.
Thank you. Any questions or comments for Julie?
Just as I said last month, and I'll probably say again next month unless there's a miracle, you know, the staff is doing a great job from where I'm sitting. I'm watching things on social media. I'm seeing that they're still doing programming, and I'm very, very proud of all of you.
I'm really pleased. I'm really pleased. There's a number of, a number of libraries that have not been able to pull together what we've been able to pull together in a really short time. So I'm incredibly proud of how hard everybody's been working. So one of the things that has gotten pushed back, though, is a lot of the preparation for, like, we were supposed to have a Fund Balance Workshop tomorrow. I'm not really ready to do that. And there's, I'm still working on the Capital Improvement Plan, bringing that stuff together for that particular group. I'm thinking maybe next week we'll be able to do that, and also the Staff and Committee. But when the State Librarian says, hey, we're gonna be doing these remote meetings on what to do about COVID, everything else kind of gets set aside so that we do those things. And hopefully, there will be a catch-up point.
Hopefully.
All right.
Any other questions about what I've been working on?
Pardon?
I said, are there any other questions about what I've been working on? Nope.
Not, we will move to regular business. Number one, update on the projects since the closure March 16th.
Okay, so the general description is that I will review a timeline of the events leading up to the closure of the library due to COVID-19 and the projects and services that have been developed and launched since that closure to support our community. Now, part of what I've got here, the first page of what's here, I'm gonna summarize a little bit, because a lot of it is what was on your meeting last month, but I just wanna make sure everybody's still up to date. So the week of March 9th is when news of the coronavirus really started to spread. On Thursday, March 12th, is when we actually started canceling and postponing our large programs. On Friday, March 13th, Clarkston schools closed, and neighboring libraries also started to close. And we had been, we had postponed or canceled meetings through April 12th. On that same day, the board called an emergency meeting to discuss our further response. And that's the point at which we decided to close the library. So the library board voted to close until further notice, beginning Monday, March 16th, and scheduled a board meeting to review that situation for Friday, March 20th at 2:30. At the point, at that point, the board decided to stay open over the weekend. So we, even though the meeting was on Friday, we stayed open through Monday so that the public could come and get their materials prior to that time. The board did vote to pay both full and part-time employees through the duration of the closure. The board also voted to purchase an additional 21 Wi-Fi hotspots in preparation to support patrons and virtual learning of students. The board voted to double the DVD limits so that the patrons could stock up before closure. And the due dates and fines, of course, are waived during the closure. The library closed on March 16th, but work did not stop. Obviously, administrative tasks kept going. So we are doing check runs, we're doing payroll, we did the audit remotely. We did a review with school administration about virtual learning and ways we could help. We did a thorough deep cleaning of the library. We did check in materials. And then IT and PR, obviously, were working to make sure information got out, and we started our plans for what was going to happen during the closure. And there were a lot of behind-the-scenes tasks that were being done, like book ordering, preparation for future programs, collection maintenance. So the employees kept working, even though at that point we were closed. On Monday, March 16th, the governor released her executive order that closed the places of accommodation, which included libraries at 3:00 p.m. But that, by that time, we were already closed. Let's see. And at that point, there was an ongoing discussion about how long the virus lives on hard surfaces such as library materials. So that was sort of the conversation that drove whether or not we were gonna be able to do some kind of curbside pickup. So on Wednesday, March 18th, the library department heads met to discuss what we can do for our patrons, specifically taking into account from a work-from-home environment. So at that point, we still had some people working at the library, but we were closed. Most people were at home, but we still had some people who were working in the library. So at that point, we were discussing forwarding phones, email and chat reference, promoting online services and providing support for those services, and then also providing virtual programming. On March 20th, the library board held a special meeting for an update of the situation. At that point, the board decided to continue the closure until further notice, approved a plan of service to allow for remote phones, chat and virtual programming, as well as funding to support additional phone lines and software to facilitate remote work for all staff. And it was decided to forego any type of curbside service because of the issues about the transmission of the virus. The board also made a budget adjustment at that time to add tutor.com live online tutoring sessions in support of virtual learning. On Tuesday, March 24th, CIDL's youth department launched their Facebook Live Storytimes. So those are Tuesdays at 10:30, Thursdays at 10, or Thursdays at 10:30, Thursdays at 6:30, and Fridays at 10:30. And you don't need a Facebook account to enjoy our live Storytimes. Then on Monday, March 30th, the library staff launched phone and chat services, and that's Monday through Saturday from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And those are done in four-hour shifts. And so when somebody calls into the library, there's a list of phone numbers that they can call, two that go into circulation, two that go into information. It actually rings the library and then forwards to a staff phone, somebody who is working remotely, they can answer the call. There are also two, two chat lines. There's an information chat line and a circulation chat line. So you can go onto the computer and you can chat with librarian or with the circulation person. And those are four-hour shifts. And so at any given time, there are two for circulation and two for information, six days a week. Additional programs and services that have been added. Library cards are being issued online through our website, and Annette is handling that from home. So she mails, when you do an online request for a card, she issues you a number, she emails you the number, and then she mails you the card. So that's how we do our address check. If you don't get your card, then you give us the wrong address if it comes back to us. Calls have been made to check in on our homebound clients. Our youth department has a blog, which features resources to assist parents who are now homeschooling. We also have Book Buzz, which is the youth department's new YouTube channel highlighting book talks of youth and teen books available in our e-collections. We have Quarantine, which is an online scavenger hunt for our teenagers, and a Discord server, which is an online meeting space for the library's various teen groups, such as Teen Lead, the Writers Group, and the Anime Club. Our Overdrive e-collection has tripled in size. RB Digital has grown from 250 to 3,500-plus digital magazine subscriptions, including magazines in other languages, and 2,400-plus newspapers. We did add tutor.com Live. The Adult Department has been working on another, a number of virtual programs as well. We have a Movie Night for Adults, which is a virtual movie discussion of a movie available on our Hoopla streaming service. We have a virtual Tea Time. We have an online four-part Tell Us About Your Travels program featuring Ireland, which is being done by Emily, who I believe is here with us tonight. Hey, Emily, shout out to you. And the Adult Department also has a blog highlighting fun crafts, travels, recipes, and more. And they are working currently on a virtual book discussion group and a virtual gaming group. So there's quite a lot going on. In terms of how we're getting that word out there, so we have Adrian and Trevor, our marketing and PR people, and they have been doing a lot on social media. We did try to put an ad in the newspaper. Unfortunately, the newspaper has decided that they are going to forego publishing, because they did not have enough ads to support the cost of printing. So we had a great ad that was supposed to go out to publicize all of this, that was supposed to be out on Wednesday, and that was the last newspaper they did, and they didn't do the whole newspaper. So unfortunately, that wonderful ad that they worked so hard on did not go out. But we have been doing a lot of word-of-mouth, as well as social media in order to get information out there. And then there are a number of people in the community who are taking the information that we have and sharing it out with friends. So I'm gonna give a shout-out to Dr. Tom Stone, who has an email chat group that he works with. It's about 140 people. And every time we send something out, he forwards it on to all of those people as well. So a lot of people are really helping to push our information out there and make sure that the public knows that we've got lots going on to support them. Do, okay, I'm gonna stop talking. Any questions?
No. We applaud everyone who's working to provide these services, so we appreciate that. Our next item is the discussion of the length of closure.
So what I'm gonna do is, I'm gonna go over a little bit about what is sort of driving the closure at this point, the executive orders, and then sort of get the board started on a conversation about sort of what comes next. So as I mentioned before, that emergency meeting happened on March 13th, and the board voted to close the library until further notice. So the official stance right now we have is until further notice. What is guiding that until further notice right now are the governor's executive orders. So that first executive order was 2020-9, Temporary Restrictions on the Use of Places of Public Accommodation. That closure began on Monday, March 16th at 3:00 p.m. By that point, we had already closed. We closed as of the 16th at the beginning of the day. So that particular executive order was rescinded, and it was replaced with Executive Order 2020-21, which was the Temporary Requirement to Suspend Activities That Are Not Necessary to Sustain or Protect Life. And that closure was to continue through Monday, April 13th. That one has since been rescinded and replaced with Executive Order 2020-42, which is an update of the Temporary Requirement to Suspend Activities That Are Not Necessary to Sustain and Protect Life. And that closure is to continue through Friday, April 30th, and includes significantly stricter restrictions. And when that particular order went out, the governor did make a statement that this doesn't mean everything will go back to normal on May 1st. So we're anticipating the possibility of that being extended. The thing that, that I have been telling the staff, and the thing that I've been hearing in these meetings with the Library of Michigan, with IMLS, with webinars at the CDC, is that when the closure happens, everything was sort of dialed back progressively. So first, they eliminated gatherings of like 250. Then they eliminated gatherings that were over 50. Then they eliminated gatherings that were over 10. Then there was a shelter-in-place order. So the, what I anticipate will be happening on the other end of it is that we will, in reverse direction, that the staff would return to the library, then the public would be invited in gradually, that at that point, there might be, you know, gatherings up to 10, gatherings up to 50. Who knows? But essentially, it would be going in reverse order. It's not like on, when they rescind this particular executive order that we throw the doors open and everybody comes in and it goes back to being the way it was. So that's kind of what I've been explaining to the staff in terms of thinking about what does programming look like going forward? What does the teen art show look like? What does summer reading look like? What does, you know, our regular programming that we normally do look like? So that's sort of where we are at this point. Now, open it up to any questions from the board or any conversation you may like to have about this.
I think most of us have been following both the governor's stance, the federal stance. So I imagine everyone is pretty well informed of the discussions that are now taking place about regional openings of things. And so I anticipate that Michigan will be participating in that type of discussion also, which may impact what we do. So we're really in a waiting pattern, and I'm, I'm anticipating we should discuss this again at our next meeting, which is, what, May 11th?
11th.
So by that time, the governor will have issued a new proclamation, and we will have something to work on. I take it that each of our department heads is thinking about how they are anticipating that we might reopen some of these programs, like summer reading.
I have them thinking about the programming specifically. I haven't involved them in the reopening process yet, because so much of what I was getting when I was going to these meetings was still a lot of speculation.
Right.
So we have a department head meeting tomorrow, and that's probably where I'm going to introduce to them this con, this, the beginnings of the conversation about how we re-enter the library and what that looks like. But up until this point, we've been talking primarily about programming.
Does anyone wish to further this discussion? Or shall we continue this discussion at our May 11th meeting? What is the feeling of the board?
I just have, just have a comment. I think that, that the staff should start looking at what we can do. I'm assuming the same as Julie, is that it, that we're not gonna be told, oh, just open the doors. So what can we do to start providing a little bit more service, and then a little bit more after that? And I think that if, that the staff, who so far have demonstrated all kinds of wonderful creativity, may be able to come up with some other really good ideas of what we can do to start expanding what we're doing without endangering staff or the general public.
Yeah.
I would think the one thing that the public's gonna want, they have a stack of books that they've read. You know, they would like new books. Some...
I know, I'm in that position.
Yeah, some, some mechanism to give books at the curbside or something, because I know I'm one of those that's kind of running out of a stack of books.
So I'm gonna address that a little bit. It's interesting, because when this all first started happening, Annette and I sat down and came up with what we thought could be potentially a pickup, a curbside pickup, or an almost contactless, actually, a almost completely contactless way to pick up materials. We decided not to do that, because at that point, they were unsure about how long the virus actually lives on different kinds of surfaces. Since then, I attended IMLS's specific webinar on collections, which is the Institute for Museum and Library Services at the federal level. They had an epidemiologist from the CDC who essentially said, while the virus can live on paper, it doesn't, that's one of the less likely ways that you would be able to pick up the virus, that if you were going to quarantine materials, 24 hours would be more than enough. And he really felt that that was only necessary if he felt that that item had visible, it's no real delicate way to put this, visible stuff on it, like if somebody sneezed, and there was actually stuff on it.
Okay.
I mean, he really was very clear that, that picking this up off of those kinds of surfaces, porous paper surfaces, was not really a concern. He did mention there's a little more of a concern if you're talking about, like, the plastic covers for DVDs, but even that, he said, was a very low, because it needs to aerosol, aerosolize back in the air in order to... The likelihood of you picking it up off of paper and getting it into your system is very low, because once it's on paper, because it's porous, it's very hard to get it back off the paper. And this is from the epidemiologist at the CDC. So, so that leads me to believe that if we did some sort of, even if we did some sort of a short, a reasonable, appropriate quarantine before we turned things back around and put them back out, that we would be perfectly safe in doing so. But I'm still doing some research on that. I don't have any serious plans. But doing some kind of a curbside pickup, I think, would be a good way to start out, where the, the staff could be back in the building. We do have very tight work quarters, so we would have to take into consideration making sure everybody had space to work. So that's why maybe we wouldn't have the public back right away, that we have the staff in there, spread them out throughout the building to make sure that there's still appropriate social distancing, and get the materials out to the public in some kind of a pickup manner, in the same way that, that restaurants and grocery stores are doing now. So I would, I would think that that would be on the top of our list to investigate. Once we invite people back into the building, some of the concerns might be, you know, providing all of the staff with masks, and extra gloves would be needed and that kind of thing. We have been approached by one of our vendors about the possibility of the Plexiglas shields, like they've been using in grocery stores. I don't know how many of you have been to a grocery store recently, but they have Plexiglas shields. Those would be a possibility to install as well for some period of time. So one of the things the board might wanna consider is the possibility of setting some money aside that would be specifically for the purpose of purchasing all of these additional COVID response sorts of applies that when we wrote the budget in 2019 for 2020, we had no idea we were going to need. So there's something else that you could, that you could talk about.
Are you going to permit people to use the various meetings?
I'm sorry?
Are you gonna permit people to use the various meeting locations?
That would still be up in the air. That really depends on what the recommendations are that are coming from, from the CDC, that are coming from the state. And like I said, they may still have restriction. While they may allow us to reopen our business, so to speak, there may be limits on gatherings. They may be saying curbside only. They may be saying groups of less than 10 still. Who knows? I'm not, right now, I know there are restrictions on the number of people that can be in a building based on the square footage. So, I mean, one person for every 4,000 square feet, or something along those lines. So we'll have to look and see what those guidelines are.
And as they keep saying, large group meetings will be the last thing that's reopened.
Yeah. Yeah.
And so some of our programs may be delayed.
Yeah, I mean, like the teen art show, which is a lot and lots and lots of people.
Elena and Tracy and I have talked about that recently, and there is consideration and ways to do it virtually. There are ideas on the table, but we're not making any promises. But she is thinking about that and talking about that.
And the other aspect is we were getting all of these art items from the students who are not in school at the moment.
Yeah.
So the art projects they've already worked on may still be in the schools.
Some of them are in Elena's office.
Yes.
There's quite a few fairly large pieces of art in her office that did not get picked up before we shut down, so some really exciting stuff, too. We are looking for ways that we can display that and promote that and show it off. So, and Elena and Tracy are thinking about that.
I mean, I think that's one that we could do. I mean, you can put all of that on the internet, and people can vote, and that would be a wonderful program.
Absolutely.
So obviously, we need to be thinking, especially between now and May, about these possibilities.
Do you want to? Tracy, did you want to say anything? Can you unmute Tracy for me, Tim?
Yep, just a second.
Tracy's here, so. Did you want to say anything, Tracy?
Yeah.
I don't mean to put you on the spot.
That's okay. All the things that you guys are talking about are things that have been going through my head. And I'm kind of, and Julie and I seem to be on the same page. Like, there's nothing we can really decide until we know what's going to happen. But the art show, since it was going to happen, you know, it already would have happened. It would have been May, March 25th or something. It's definitely like the first thing that we are trying to think about. We just want to try to find a way to make it so it's, people can see all the art and vote on it, and it's like the fair process. And so we're all thinking about it. Elena's got some ideas. And then summer reading, we're just, I don't know what I'm going to do yet, but I have some ideas. It's all like percolating back there. I'm just waiting to see what, you know, what the guidelines are going to be.
Excellent. So we're looking for that. Do we want to set aside some funding now for purchasing some of these things? We may not need to purchase them yet, but we should probably, it wouldn't be a bad idea to set something aside so that when we get some guidelines, the money's already been set aside for that purpose.
Which would expedite things. Do you have any idea, Julie, what you think we might need?
I don't know. I was thinking if we at least, we always have a break-fix budget that Arlene has in her 931 account. I hate to tap into her money that she could be, that she may need for HDAC, that she may need for, I mean, we're still keeping an eye on the building. It's still a 30-year-old building, so that's, I hate to tap into that. I almost felt like if there were just a couple thousand dollars that we set aside that said, you know, this is our COVID emergency money that I can use to buy those Plexiglas shields, if that's what we decide that we need, that I can use to buy, and issue a mask to every single staff member that I can, those are the kinds of things that I think are...
If you can get such things.
Well, I just mean the fabric masks at this point. We're not going to be able to get the, but, you know, we've got staff people who are making them, but I don't want to say to the staff, okay, well, y'all have to make your own mask.
And you'll need like coffee filters or something to use with those. That's what we're using at our house, is coffee filters with our fabric masks.
There are companies now that are creating nice fabric masks that are sort of formed to your face that come in nice, solid colors, and we could get, you know, we could buy one for everybody and have it available that when they come back to work, it's issued to them, it becomes theirs. Same kind of thing in terms of, you know, I don't know how many of you have heard that when various employees are going into work, they are taking temperature of people as they come in the building. So the library doesn't have a thermometer. It's not something we've ever needed before. But a laser thermometer would be a good thing to have on hand so that we can check temperatures of staff members as they come into the building and just make sure everybody feels like we're doing every step that we should in the same, those are the same requirements that they're doing in the grocery stores, at the gas stations, at these places where people are essential and are working. So when we become, when we are allowed to be essential again and go back to work, I want to make sure that the staff feels that we're doing everything we can to protect them.
Absolutely. I feel like 2,000 might be a little on the low side. I was thinking, I was thinking even of as much as 5,000 if, you know. I mean, who knows what we're going to need, what we're going to need to do, obviously. But I feel like maybe allocating a little bit more than 2,000 might be better so that we don't have to like have a special meeting to go up to 2,500 or something. So I would recommend a higher dollar amount, I think.
If we don't need it, it can always go back to fund balance.
Absolutely.
Well, you know I can pinch a penny till it screams, so. I've been doing that since I started here, so.
And that's a good thing, and I know I'm in favor of that. You know, when it comes to the taxpayers' money, I'm very conservative. But I think that to keep us from having to have a special meeting just because Plexiglas shields are more than we think they're going to be, or masks, or there's some other item that the CDC says, oh, you're going to need to have, you know, something that's beyond our imagination at this point, because we don't know.
The thing that usually gets to be expensive is anything that has to do with installation. So I've actually priced out the Plexiglas shields, and they're pretty inexpensive. But getting our facilities guy to come in and put them in, that I'm not so sure about.
Yeah.
That's where I always get dinged, is the installation.
I agree with Jan. I would do something like 5,000, and then you should have more than enough, and we don't have to worry about pinching pennies to make sure we secure everything for the staff.
Okay.
Okay, I'll accept a motion to deal with COVID-19 expenses.
I move that we appropriate $5,000 to cover the necessary COVID-19 expenses in conjunction with reopening the facility.
And I second it.
It's been moved and seconded?
Just for clarification, can we, we would take that out of fund balance?
Yes.
Okay. And then we would put it in, why don't we put it in 931, which is Buildings and Grounds? That's Annette's number, I'm sorry, Arlene's number.
Okay.
And that would allow us, because most of this, I'm assuming, is going to be physical kinds of things.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, let me restate that as I understand it. We want to put, we, there is a motion to put $5,000 from Fund Balance into line 931 for COVID-19 reentry expenses.
Perfect.
Got it. Thank you.
Any questions or comments? If not, all those in favor, please call the roll.
Okay. Jan Gaffney?
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Keesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy?
Yes.
Anne Rose?
Yep.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, the motion has passed. The next item has to do with lawn maintenance, should that day arise.
Well, the grass is growing and it's getting green in my own yard. I always know it's time to start thinking about lawn maintenance when my husband starts wanting to get out the tractor, so. Okay, so for many years, lawn mowing and general groundskeeping tasks, like spring and fall cleanup and that, at the library, were handled by independent township DPW. And it was a great partnership, even after the reestablishment of the library, and was quite economical. In August of 2018, due to unexpected staffing issues, the DPW let the library know they would not be able to complete the work for the remainder of the season, and later informed us that they would not be able to provide lawn care in 2019. Last year, we went through a bid process and hired a contractor to handle our lawn maintenance. We had hoped that the township might be able to take us back on as a client in 2020, but that's not the case. So I asked for the board to post an RFP for the 2020 season. And the RFP was very similar to what we did last year, except that we had added the spreading of mulch in the parking lot islands, and also in addition to the spring cleanup process, and grooming and maintenance of the storywalk on the south side of the parking lot that we share in collaboration with Clarkston Community Schools. So fast forward, the board said, yep, go ahead and put that RFP out. But shortly after that March 9th meeting, the situation regarding COVID-19 began to unfold. And by March 16th, the library was closed and focused on transitioning the entire staff to a work environment in anticipation of a shelter-in-place order. And the posting of the RFP for lawn maintenance did not take a priority, shockingly. So however, the contractor that handled the library's lawn maintenance last year took the initiative to send an estimate for the upcoming season that arrived in the mail only a few days after the March 9th board meeting, but was actually dated prior to the meeting. Given the current situation, I would propose that we award the contract to Michigan Outdoor Services, who provided good service last year, has shown an interest in renewing the contract for the coming season, and took the initiative to reach out to us with a timely quote. While the quote is slightly higher than last year, your packet does include a bid summary from last year's RFP process for comparison. Michigan Outdoor Services is still significantly less than either of last year's other two bidders. And the governor has stated that lawn maintenance is currently designated nonessential. So seeking quotes will be difficult at this time. But when the restriction is lifted, the library grounds will need immediate attention. So awarding a contract to assure we have a contractor would be prudent. They did give us great service last year, and I feel like it would be nice to support this local business and say to them, yep, we would like you to take care of us again this year.
I'll accept a motion.
It's all budgeted.
I did, I looked at the numbers, and the numbers are still pretty good, in my opinion. And still clearly significantly lower than any of the other bids. And obviously, this is not a normal time, so, you know. So I would move that we extend the contract based on the new pricing.
I second the motion.
So it's been moved and seconded to award the contract to Michigan Outdoor Services, our previous provider, with the library's lawn maintenance contract for the 2020 season. Any comments or questions? I have one question. Will his contract this year include mulching?
What I think I will do is call him up. I'm sure he'll answer his phone and talk with me about it. But I didn't want to talk to him about it until I was sure the board was okay with me skipping this, skipping over this process. So I'll give him a call and see what he would do to include that and what additional charge he might have for that. If he's not willing to do the mulching, we have a couple of other options. We could use our facilities company, or there might be some other local landscapers that we could hire separately to do that. We have never had them mulch for us before.
Okay. So we'll explore that, but we have other options.
But we do have other options, indeed.
Okay, any other comments or questions? If not, let's have a roll call vote.
Jan Gaffney?
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Keesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy?
Yes.
Anne Rose?
Yep.
And Crystal?
Yes.
Motion is passed. Thank you. Are there any other concerns that we need to discuss today?
I just put that on there in case board members, as they've been listening to everything that's going on, might have something they wish, they would wish to bring up that I hadn't ought to put on the agenda.
I had one question. Is our recycling being picked up in the parking lot?
It is. Actually, it was full, and somebody brought it to our attention, and the email went out to Erica and Debbie, and I'm not sure which one of them got through, but somebody gave them a call, and it is back to empty again. So feel free to bring your paper and dump it in there at the appropriate social distance.
All right. In that case, it's too bad Dan isn't here, but I will accept a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded that we adjourn. Please call the roll.
Jan Gaffney?
Yes.
Allison McFadden-Keesling?
Yes.
Nancy Moon?
Yes.
Marilyn Pomeroy?
Yes.
Anne Rose?
Yep.
And Crystal?
Motion is passed, and the meeting is adjourned at 7:23. And I want to thank everyone for participating, and I want to thank the IT staff for helping us do this.
Good job, IT.
Thank you.